All right, um, all the work of Public Service and Utility. All right, there's one item on the agenda, Mr. Fong. Word in contact for his department. Say your part. For instance, the department in 2018 for the work department.
Please, please, sir, we have a party tonight is for the replenishing of our parts. We need to honor our duty and our work. Set up from 2018 by required items, brass goods, quarters, sands, valves. There's a number of little bits, close, close, which takes out a little bit for each company. Someone will go to Blair, someone will go to Ferguson. It is for the request of the parts that we use on a regular basis. Last year, we took in a little over 30 items, so I'm happy to do.
Any questions? Move it. All those in favor, Brad? Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else to come before Public Service and Utility? Motion to adjourn? All those in favor, Brad?
We walk over the community administrative efficiency. Want to hear the recognition of Martin Luther King celebration. And we do this every year, the Human Rights Commission has their event on January 20 at the Skenty County Community College at 2:30. And it will be under the resolution that.
Second.
Oh, there's yeah. All right, thank you. Just an information, regarding the star on the enhanced star, you know, an article in T, whether it was, that had, you know, that there's a new procedure now for the seniors. They're going to be doing verification now online, which is kind of good. So I talked with Molly, me and Shemano, we called with the council coming up the Sunday crackers. So Molly is going to be with us from 10:00 until 12:00 noon to have additional applications and forms of information for our seniors to be sure that they enroll in the enhanced star program. Again, they only have to do this once a seminar, they want to do interim verification every year as they have to do in the past.
If you're going to get a scene.
That's correct.
Also, so we do still are going to have to.
But every year.
When you do the income approval.
But again, what they're, right, but again, what they're going to be doing is she's going to perform, she was a Reda mailing October to all our residents here in the city. They're doing another mailing out to the end of January or early February. And they're also going to be making phone calls for the March 1st deadline. So the office will be very busy. And as Molly indicated, the city also has staff that's willing to come to the residents themselves, to our seniors. So those, again and again, who are watching here this evening, if you need to have anybody down the house or again, any questions, please don't hesitate to call the assistant office. And real quick, her direct line is (58) 382-5075. (382) 5075. And join us the Sunday crackers, your partner at council should be with us. All right. Anything else to come before we move on to the administrative mission? She's 28. First and second, I'll bear say that. Thank you, Richard.
Call to our Department of Safety and then one item on the agenda is endorse the appointment for the civilian police review board. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, submit two names. So the agency is on the police community review board. Mr. D'Acquino is the recommendation, the chamber, and Ms. Rivera is the recommendation. Connect to United Neighborhoods.
One moment.
Second. On the favor.
Hi.
Thank you. Any other business for Public Safety?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. On the favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
So I want to open up city planning development. And we're going to start off with Mr. Wallens. You see?
Yes. I saw him. I didn't see him.
Just want to make sure we're doing our one. So we're doing the permit first?
Yes.
For the permits. Yep. This is, just to be clear, this is a new permit for an existing sign that's going to get a new order. So if you were to go down to the SN apartments, full of, you will see this sign. This is an existing sign, they want to update the sign. Just want to make sure it came across clear in the narrative. We're saying it's a new permit because that permit, we don't have a file on it, the sign's been there for so long, we're hopeful, otherwise we would just not be here. This is going to be a swap off, we're going to put a new, or a after sign on in place of the existing.
Questions? Second, on the favor, I. The second item is along.
Second item is the award of the Skenty Bridge, all in specific repairs, that's the name of it, however, repairing of one bridge, the Alfa Avenue Bridge, two pedestrian bridges, over 890 that the city owns. The low bid was Benny Cringe, the same contractor that did the repairs, the Oak Street Bridge. Our consultant went through the numbers, agreed with them, they were very aggressive, but all the hits were pretty aggressive. They're taking everything, so the steel bridge, so this will be theirs, so it's not a lot of constructions that have to contribute, etc. So, give this award, working with the state, we're also going to fill in the tunnel. The tunnel was another city, kind of like, building 190. The DOT agree with us that they will not see it filled, so we're going to remove things going in the tunnel and take away that by fill.
Questions?
Yeah, so, change of work orders, Chris, how does that work? Going to the Oak Street Bridge, for example, whatever the video was originally, when there's a change of work order for additional work or whatever has to be done, how does that process happen? They don't have to come to the council, does it? And who approves those, that process? How does that work?
Well, the process, I mean, it starts with our construction inspection team and myself. And we deem, is it relative to completion of the project goals? And then we work with the DOT, and if they sign off on an email, then we start going through the order on contract process. And they can increase, you know, they can increase the contract amount to meet that. We had several order on contracts, like first period whole work project, where we encountered faults or underground structures or unknowns, and we had these order on contracts for those. And it's seen as kind of business with construction, is there something specifically?
Well, again, I'm just wondering, you know, is there something that this, this construction group missed, or the other three did catch? And how else can we come up with a full change of work order? I'm not picking on this particular project, but the numbers do vary, you know, from the lowest bid to the middle to the highest. I just have some concerns with that, and obviously our engineers said this, you know, works.
The big difference was MPT, and they were all on MPT by, they were at the other, which we thought was interesting. But we did call them, and one of the things that we do, we see in letters, you know, we talk to the group, you say, what's your familiarity with the city, the reputation is very high. They've done work like this in the past. If it is to be hired, I mean, you have the money to do it, this is well within our budget, our budget estimate, quite higher than this, so well within it. And if they, and if they try to do something which is, you know, an end around, then there are precautions, there are steps that we have to take on that, we have to get approval from the DOT for anything, if quantity is a bit higher, you have to renegotiate. The DOT has a lot of steps in there, so that if you came in and you said 50,000, and then you look at it, it's eight misses, 200,000. You don't immediately use 200,000, you have to renegotiate and bring it back to the DOT and make more work for me. But no, they don't need to, you know, hide.
But that's kind of the council, yeah, just bringing it with that, we shared when we were on the boards, I know Mary's on the board too, anytime we have a change of order in the contract, they always go up to us, the buildings and grounds that we had to approve prior to when we actually got to see the numbers or the changes. I know, we just, we never see that here, and I'm just curious as to what I can see. All right, very good, thank you.
But if something doesn't come back within the budget, or, you know, in this case, DOT has to put more money on the table, if it's a change order that exceeded the budget, it would come back to the council.
Or if it exceeded the budget.
Right, but in the process where it's considered the normal evolution of a project, where, you know, you always assume a change order goes up in price.
Right.
Occasionally, there is one where it goes down, but again, if it, yes, occasionally, it's a huge, but if it exceeded your overall budget, we'd have to come back to the council for approval if there wasn't some way to pay for it. And we did, we just took, the various projects are, you know, engineers of a high degree do, but both around about the Oak Street Bridge and the period whole bar phase two, all of them were actually brought in under budget. So we had the last order on contract, actually reduced the contract amount. I mean, there were million dollar projects, and we reduced them 100,000 dollars at the same time. That's one of the reasons too, that, like Mayor said, you don't see the up here, is that we're not increasing the budget number, we're usually working within the numbers.
Well, that's true, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? On the favor. All right. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's endorsement for the planning commission.
If there's a big town on the planning question, I've submitted the name of Kimberly's case to council and ask your favorable consideration.
Questions? I'll move it. Second. On the favor. The next item on the agenda is the sidewalk program discussion. And he's put together, which I think is in everyone's package, an outline for discussion purposes.
Before we get too far along, I just want to point out one conversion error on the bottom of the third paragraph on the first page. It says 400 something million, it's actually 47 million. Thank you for, Mr. Wallen, for finally pointing that out, so it's 47 million, not 44.
It's not 424, it's 47.
But otherwise, basically, this is a discussion item, a proposal, putting together some of the details as far as the sidewalk program for special assessment that people have been asking for. As you all know, sidewalks are a huge issue in the city, and they are the responsibility of the property owner. And it's very expensive for a property owner to do their sidewalks, as I well know. And this kind of creates a layaway program for, in some ways akin to that, for people to pay for the sidewalks. The cost of the sidewalk will change according to the contract, to the bid, but right now it's 75 to 80 dollars per square yard. So I use the higher estimate of 80 dollars per square yard. The work will start hopefully this spring. Qualifications for the sidewalk would be 75% of the property owners in the special assessment district in favor of the sidewalk program. The petition list will be confirmed by the corporation council. And just to pass this around, it's a example of what a petition sheet would look like. The special assessment district must be at least one city block full size, that way we can take advantage of the economies of scale. And the special assessment districts would be matched, hopefully with a paving program, so the neighborhood would have both newly paved streets and new sidewalks. The payment, residents can pay for the sidewalk costs of the sidewalk all at once, early or in payments, and that will be added as a special assessment fee on the tax bill. The cost will be based on the frontage of the property, so everybody would know what their actual cost is with interest. And the special assessment is being proposed to be paid off neither five, seven, or 10 years, depending upon what this property determines. At the very end, we'll get to that in a little bit, you will see examples of five, seven, and 10 year chaos. City owned properties, those sidewalks will be replaced with web, and then once those properties are sold, it will be the responsibility of the new owner. Selling property, the cost of sidewalk will be transferred to the new owner. And exemptions, if the 75% threshold is met, no one would be exempt, except for property owners that have existing sidewalks that sound to be up to code by the city engineering department. So you have some examples of costs, just for sake of easiness, chose a 50 foot frontage, got to be pretty close to the average in the city. So you would see that the cost would be roughly 22, 22. Privately, on average, it would be closer to 3,055. So with interest, depending upon the payback period, it would be 2,455 dollars and change over five years, 2,551 and change over seven years, or 2,700 over 10 years. Again, the advantage here is that this allows people the ability to pay off over time, so it's not one big financial burden all at once. So this gives them really a chance to improve their neighborhoods, improve their sidewalks, and do it at a much more reasonable fee. Yes?
So you're saying over a five year period of time, for someone including 2,222 dollars, they will only have 233 dollars of interest over five years?
Yep. That's assuming a 4% interest rate. You can go on the interest calculators.
It seems to be very low to me.
It's only 4% of the small class. Ms. Parker?
I do have a question. With regards to the homeowner, the homeowner, the property owner, does the person have to live in that particular property? Do they have, you know, because we have people that own property all over the city, they all live in one, but they have multiple properties. So how does it work for people, the property that they own aren't living there?
It has to be the property owner that signs off by the amount of people living there.
I understand that. My question is, if I own these property, I don't live in it, I'm renting it out, I can sign, forever. So, so that means if I'm the property owner, how, I'm going to try to recover my cost probably through my renters. So how are we looking at how that may impact the increases in rent? Because it's conceivable, and it's probably, probably going to happen, because that's what generally, you know, there's an increase, the tax belongs to the people that are paying, paying the mortgage, paying the rent. So that's, that's my concern, because if, there's people that own like 10, 10 properties or more throughout the city, and I don't think they're going to absorb the cost on their own. So I think that's something we need to consider, we have, we have some neighborhoods that have many, many renters. So how does that impact those folks as well? And I don't know how we address that, but I think it's something we really need to give consideration to. My other question was, I saw in here that it's going to go along with the paving.
So that would be the priority, yes.
Right, so you already have the first phase, which we filled would be?
The two that came in and petitions already are Raymond Street and McCallum Street.
Raymond and McCallum?
Those have already been paid.
Yeah, they've just recently been paid as well, so.
So they would be the two that would, would be the first in the sidewalk program?
Assuming.
And, sorry. Are these actual, do you all actually go out and get quotes from someone who does this work? More than one, or?
We, we got to count in, because of us, I thought, we had some range that they were due large scale like this, not, not small scale.
And with all the numbers, I chose the higher end, be conservative. So the interest rate, chose 4%, is probably a little high. With the 80 dollars, I chose the high end of the estimate. Yes?
The one thing I did want to point out was, you know, Raymond, McCallum are great streets to start. There are some other things that we're going to look at specifically with Raymond and McCallum. We will look to change the city standard, I'll come here with it, just to make sure we're all on board. Our city standard is six inches of concrete. I believe six inches of concrete is necessary, the downtown is necessary, streets with curb and sidewalk that are integral, above where you have a three, five, six foot green strip between the sidewalk and the road, where you're going to see very little of any traffic on it. We can save a third of our costs by going to the traditional four inch concrete sidewalks. I've talked to some people about that, the DOT standard is four inches. You know, we do six just to be comparable, but then when you get to a street such as mine at Camp, where you have integral curb and sidewalk, talking six inches, those property owners are going to have to pay for the six inch, but then at the same time, it's always been the city's policy that the curb is installed as part of the city's cost, as the carriage way definition. So on those streets, they would be a little bit pricier, they would definitely have to be incorporated into the paving program in some way, just to make sure, because it's all integral, like to make a right avenue, right was the last street we did to that extent with right. So, you know, my, there are people on my street that are starting a petition, they're waiting to hear from me because of this actual meeting right now, or the percentage of petitions and things like that, but they don't know how to express what the cost would be. So that's just something different, whereas McCallum, like I said, McCallum and Raymond great starter streets because of that buffer, it's a sidewalk pure spot, but when you get into areas around the park, or if we were to do like Maryland, or one of those streets in the future, you're, you're going to get into curb and sidewalk integral. So it's a different cost structure.
Chris, you're saying that if we, it would be less costly to do McCallum if we could have a four inch sidewalk, and that's, that's acceptable for DOT, but it's not for the city? Like I won't do.
The city's always bigger and better, right? We're the city, and we had one standard. Around the downtown, around all those areas where you see, you know, trucks pull up, on the, you know, where I am, trucks pull up all the time. And if you do four inches, you're going to have issues unless you, you put a lot of reinforcement to do things. We're still, we do, our city standard is all driveways, are still six inches, there's still six inches of reinforcement, because that's your, where you're going to see your most, your most use, in your heaviest lows. But if we're talking about, you know, really trying to be physically conservative, trying to get the best bang for our buck, I think that we really have to look at, you know, not applying one standard, which is the six inch slab of concrete in all these residential areas. I think we have to be a little, you know, not, not just rural, but just, you know, responsible. I would even say responsible. If you're in Boston, Raymond Street, you have five feet, my parents on Hertzville, there's a seven foot grass strip, and there's trees. I think it's physically impossible to put a car on their sidewalk. So to come in and do a six inch sidewalk and charge them for it, I just don't think that's as responsible. But if you have an area, we put four inches in, and then it gets, you know, gets beat the heck because somebody drives on it, they're going to come back to us. You know, that's one of the, the only things that I really think are going to be a learning process, is making sure that we really have good inspection, third party inspection companies, because people are going to be, these aren't free anymore, these aren't the old, people are going to be paying for these sidewalks, so they're going to expect them to last. You know, we're going to really have to make sure people know not to dump all the salt and the world on, because we've seen that, where people, the use of salt affects the life of the sidewalks. So what I don't want is them coming back, we had that other project, the business owners come back and said, look at my sidewalk, I didn't pay for this, but I want you to replace it. It's like, well, your sidewalk is this, will get everybody else. You find out that they, they maintain it in such a way that it doesn't conduce for a long time. That's where it's going to get a little, little dicey, but I'll deal with it.
And what about trees? You said there's, I mean, ours is the perfect example, there's a tree string, there's trees there, so.
Trees will have to be evaluated in the right way, and they're going to have to hurt the life, they're going to have to remove. But the city has a policy of, we have removed these trees in the city right away, it's always going to bound them, but once we remove it, the property order is possible for the sidewalk. So that's really what we have. So we will, we will evaluate, yes, there are several trees, as long as we're on the stockade, I think.
All right. So just a, a question.
No, sorry. I just wanted to add, so Chris, back to your four and six inches, would it make sense to do six inches where the driveway is, that 12, that 10, 12?
Well, that's fair enough, we already do that. That is, that is city standard as well.
So that would be six, but then the rest of the driveway, walking, or it could be four inch?
Well, it would have to be as a case by case basis, as long as there's no, you know, termination that someone's going to drive on it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but no, all driveways, all driveways, all red.
Every six.
Always six.
Ms. Parker?
I'm curious as to, if you can't give a definitive answer, but sometimes, during the cost of curving for 50 feet, or whatever this is based on, what do we do, you know, what the cost of, you see, when the curve costs like?
3,200 bucks.
Okay.
Fifty feet, so it's roughly like 65 dollars.
And I also question how old the current conditions are, and can probably still battle, and you have people moved, are they new owners? Those types of things, what percentage of people signed them for the street versus the number of residents would all be, questions that I would like answered before next Monday. And I still have concern about our elderly and our, I think really, I have concern about, and I wonder the person who's barely staying in their home and then, you know, incurring this additional cost. So personally, I'd like to see the percentage of property owners a little bit higher. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I would feel like a low of 80 or 85%.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is only for discussion, we're not voting on this next Monday.
Oh, okay.
But yes, that's why I'm with, yes, that's why I'm with that, right in the back right now, because I heard you say that next Monday. No, that's why we're flushing this out now, that's what we got, we want to get this discussion going, flush out any questions, continue to do more homework. Can I have Chuck Thornton come in that, can you share an action about possible home rule and public hearing and whatever? I had asked, Carl, did you get an opportunity to say that we need a law of law, or there needs to be?
There's a lot more to this than law or book.
Yeah, I actually, I pulled it up, and I looked at where the meeting started, and really, the petitions come in, and then the council at that point has to hold the vote here, and then you vote all cases and ordinance, so there's no home rule or state action or anything like that.
This is not a case by case basis for a petition that comes in?
Yes.
So we each share?
Street block, street block, yeah. Whatever the district is, it's laid out, because theoretically, it can be much bigger or smaller, whatever.
Since this is, the city's borrowing the money from the homeowner, basically?
The city's spreading the money, the homeowners paid off with the interest, so we're going to give our.
So we get to check on homeowners and find out if their interference on their taxes, first see people that signed the petitions, because, you know, we're only taxpayer money. I know taxpayers going to have that, but my concern would be, should do a credit check on people, make sure they're able to pay, because if they walk away from the house, somebody else is going to be stuck with the bill, when that comes forward. And my other question is, would trees, most of the sidewalks that I see in the city are put by city trees. So would people have an argument for notice of claim against the city, let's say they did sign on board with this, they're going to be forced to pay for a new sidewalk, and the city tree actually costs the sidewalks to not be in city code anymore. I mean, I know we pay claims for the trees, right, and sidewalks, that's why we, we have them, I thought.
No.
Since this is, the city's borrowing the money for the homeowner, basically?
The city's providing the money, the homeowners paid off with the interest. So we're going to give off.
Checks on homeowners and find out if their endeavors under taxes, first see people that signed the petitions. Because, you know, we're borrowing taxpayer money. I know taxpayers can have that, but my concern would be, should do a credit check on people and make sure they're able to pay. Because if they walk away from the house, somebody else is going to be stuck with the bill when that comes forward. And my other question is, would trees, most of the sidewalks that I see in the city are funded by city trees. So would people have an argument for notice of claim against the city, let's say they did sign on board with this and they're going to be forced to pay for a new sidewalk and the city tree actually caused the sidewalks to not be in city code anymore? I mean, I know we pay claims for the trees, right, and sidewalks. That's why we, we have them, we bought them. Though we, we fix them, then we're going to pay the claim. No?
I don't.
I know on Pennsylvania Avenue, we did for a guy.
Took the tree out, fixed the sidewalk?
Yeah, yes.
I'm not aware of ever fixing the sidewalk. When there's a complaint about a tree, well, Chris said, true value to the tree, but, you know.
But if the city tree causes the sidewalk to heave and crack, that's not the city's responsibility?
I wish, we'd see the sidewalk in my place.
I understand, but if it's, it's the act of the tree that causes it to, to heave, it isn't, it isn't going because it's just a flat sidewalk and it decided to crack. I think I can make another argument for some, for a lawyer.
So, Chris, can you, can you just reiterate what you just said in reference to the tree? You said you would come to the information.
Yeah, well, the, the city policy, the city policy was true. So the city would remove the trees and the, and the root system that's there. Then we, we either notify or you notify the property owner, the sidewalk facility responsible. We have not repaired the sidewalks from tree caused by damage. Our trees are called damage. We have not.
We had, in one case, I had a fellow in Pennsylvania that became through council meeting, Carlos, and had the sidewalk repaired. That's, that's the one that I'll?
Did the tree fall down? Did the tree fall or?
No, the root wall.
Yeah, we can throw out the tree. We can throw out the whole tree.
Anyway, just to answer some of the questions that were asked, uh, the petitions that were turned in have been in for more than two years. I think the people in the area would be going back around, uh, with better cost figures, estimates, and get the petitions done again. At that time, both the sets of petitions that were turned in, over ninety percent of the people signed on. Uh, so that's a very good response. And, uh, yes, uh, the, there's issues with apartment complexes with the elderly. But it is code and this allows for a little bit of a, uh, less extensive way of doing it. Uh, and rather than enforcing it all at once. So, you know, the sidewalks are an issue in the, in the city. Uh, something has to be done. There's been no alternatives brought forward. This is a sustainable approach and something just for discussion at this point.
Mr. Rivera?
First observation, you mentioned people going up. Is that neighborhood association going up together with the association?
It was really, uh, depends upon neighborhood. It could be a neighborhood association. Some individuals took it upon themselves to do, uh, do these streets.
What I would like to see maybe have the neighbors, um, involved and then be the driver of the petition. Because getting neighborhood knowledge vital for this problem because they can help, so get petitions, they're going to manage this. And we will see their work. Because they are there and know what's going on in their community.
It's a good suggestion.
Quick question. I mean, I asked this, I think we discussed this last year or something there. And at that time, you said we were going to put the sidewalk, go back into paving at some point. When I asked you this, that's not an option anymore. Going back the way, what would you do?
It just becomes an element of cost. And we always looked at that and just the reality of maintaining street service. So it's a prerogative of the council. Uh, but to be able to keep up with the street service, I don't see a way that we can do the sidewalk curbs and street service.
But you did say at that time, I think you said next year we started again, if I remember correctly. What was your idea?
Well, we look at these things all the time. And again, there are case-by-case bases where if we're doing other work, there's sewer work or other things that disturb the sidewalks, things in place.
And just one, a quick one. Our city-owned property, not the city-owned property that we're selling for sale, like around the parks. Fairview Park, that long stretch there is, there's no sidewalk, there's no amassite. It was amassite, there's no nothing. It's ground. Walling for the park, the same thing. Um, Tend Avenue, Park Town, I think that's all, that's all shot there.
Yeah.
The turnarounds, the rightaways and some of that annoying things, are we going to be addressing these at some point? So, you know, if we're going to force the property owner to fix their sidewalk and pay for it, a special assessment. I understand the theory, the reasons for this, but are we going to get our city-owned property? Fairview Park is, you can't walk that, you can't walk it. You have to walk the road because there's no anything there. And I brought this to the attention of Commissioner General Services a couple of times and maybe even Mr. Wong, I don't remember. But, I mean, these have to be addressed too at some point. I guess what I'm saying is we should be leading by example too. This is my point with this.
Well, we try to invest in parks and city property where we can, but it's always living within the budget.
But I'm saying the city code is saying we have to repair these. I have to repair my sidewalk. It's not city code. Why isn't the city following the same, their own code? And I guess is my question.
We try and maintain those to the city code, try and again, work within the budget. We try and work with homeowners. And this proposal is not forcing property owners, but it's really based on property owners' requests to work with the city and leverage the resources and buying power collectively to give them better value for the ability to do something that under code is responsibility of the property owner.
Well, I guess I would feel better than if it's an option for the homeowner instead of, you know, they can be directed to do this. Let's say I want, let's say it's ten percent. I'm one of the ten percent that said, no, I don't want to be on, I can't afford it. I'm a fixed income, which I am. So I can't afford a special assessment. So where does that put that person out the house? Or the city forebodes is on it at some point? I mean, this sounds good. I'm not trying to throw camp water on it, but I can see this as being a bureaucratic nightmare too at some point. What happens to people who own arrears? We forebodes again about homes now, uh, that I can see. So this is going to add to their expense, obviously. Some people can afford it and some people can't. My feelings.
Well, again, we're looking at this, I mean, overall, an, an average homeowner is going to be saving approximately about twenty percent of the cost by partnering with the city on these projects. So twenty percent savings, I think is really going to be worthwhile, my investment. Uh, and again, if your sidewalk is code compliant, if brand, they were recently replaced, you're going to be exempt from this, from having participated in the program anyway. Uh, and regarding the petition process, I think so will you. I'd like to see a brochure put together, an informational brochure. So when you walk into somebody's, uh, house, um, you know, we've got some information that we can give, um, the, the property owner with these facts and figures. Not have to read a whole sheet of paper because it's quite nasty. I might go through it. But again, at least informational brochure with all the options in there and fully explain, you know, what this is going to entail. But again, bottom line is you're going to have a twenty percent savings if I partner with the city rather than hiring that, you know, that private contractor. Um, because again, as, as we all know, and like we said, we walk these sidewalks all the time. Um, and the sidewalks are in that shape. And I think it's, it's a good pilot program. Even, let's just look at this as a pilot this year, until they started and then let's work through all these questions that we have. Uh, you know, how can we make it really worth while to, to move forward and continue the project? Um, do I live with the house here?
It's an investment, or it's, uh, that the city is making, but also mostly the, uh, property owners. Uh, but it will help with property values over time. There's research that shows that property values go up. People take pride in their neighborhood. Uh, and there's been stuff that shows that a couple of years after people start, you see improvements in the houses, the values go up. So, um, you know, is it, is it ideal? Probably not. But it, it's something to discuss.
I'm sorry, just something Mr. Rivera said and then, uh, Mr. Hosier. My assumption was going to be the neighbors would be, the neighborhoods would be responsible for filling their own petitions. Is there some other idea out there? I mean, if the workload's going to fall on them, right? It's not a problem for the city. This for Larry Payton.
I think Mr. Rivera's plan is just to put it in the neighborhoods, you know, and have one of those. Would those be, if you mind, that should be the right.
Yeah, well, they'll have to, yeah, they're going to have to.
The citizens to get involved.
Yes.
Or, no, I get it. Or, or goes to me coming to your neighborhood.
Yeah, you did. You always get any petition.
He's living in my neighborhood, doing in mine, you in your neighborhood. He has me coming to yours to, to carry petitions around. Understand?
And then I asked a big question that nobody has asked or were afraid to ask yet. How was the selection process going to be? Who was going to select the streets or the blocks that we're going to do? Was it falling on Chris again over there? Or is it falling on Mayors and all? I think, I think that's what he said. I said, well, I might, well, you just clearly said that these other two streets were paid last year. So does that say that they're out because they're already paid? Or are we saying income in two thousand nineteen streets have been paid?
What was?
You see what I'm saying?
And as you said, it's a pilot project. It's to try to get both the sidewalks and the streets together. I mean, if it's, yeah, ideally it would be together, but in this case, because there was a delay getting the program forward, just, they, I mean, I think Raymond's just paid last year, so.
Nobody can have national brick, but then plus it all.
You know, you know, but you say that the Uly Street is not legal?
Boy, that's just quite a thing. Don't even go to that. It's a legal.
But anyway, that's something, that's something we just have to flush out too. And I don't know how we want to, what kind of discussion do we want to use? I mean, how is that going to be determined? What streets and what, are we looking to spend the entire million that in, in one shot?
And the, it has to be initiated by the residents.
I understand that. But you had ten, Pete, ten blocks that initiated here. I mean, and we don't really know the two thousand nineteen baby.
Then, then we'll do ten blocks. If it's within that million dollar budget appropriate by the council. The only time a discretion would come up is if there were more requests than what the council has allocated money. Then you'd have to go out for additional money or move it to the next year. And what I believe is you will probably not have requests that will equal the million dollars. You know, you'll start off with one or two streets and we'll learn from them and see how it works. And then either modify going forward or, you know, continue from, uh, what we've done in the first place.
So again, can somebody ballpark me what a typical one block is going to run? I mean, and we don't have a typical one block. And all these streets are different lengths and different sizes, but can, can one of you guys three give me an idea of what, let's just say rainbow rainbows for absolutely, did you guys, did they do the entire block thing of rain?
I think it's about halfway.
So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
I think it's a, to Linux, maybe a, the one street. I think it's a rose to the Linux.
Alright, so take a lot like that. Have any idea what it's going to run? I mean, that's something I'd like to see where the numbers are.
We have a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand each. Total cost estimated was.
Okay.
Oh, two, oh, for both, for both, uh, blocks or two city blocks?
We've already been submitted in those initial.
So you can do, okay, so.
That's about seven, eight blocks.
Yeah, seven, eight blocks.
Okay.
That's, that's a good number.
Mary?
Both sides, both sides.
Anything else? Ms. Porter? Um, I know that the, the information in terms of how we determine what the cost was or estimate the cost goes through Callahan. But we still have to get three years, um, for this project.
To be it, some of these numbers would vary a little bit no matter what. And we were looking to do this separate from the paving program, um, so that we could hopefully get more bidders as there wouldn't be the paving component to the asphalt component. So that is what we're looking at. And once again, it's a fluid thing. We can try both ways as we go, but the initial project was to be a separate bid, concrete only, um, for, for those two streets. Um, once again, the street bike camp is a little bit more complicated. I'll have to think about that one just because it's so integrated with the paving program.
Alright. Thank you.
Keep running going. So again, what we do with this, I really want to make sure that contractor, uh, has a qualified apprenticeship program as well. Uh, is there any way we can tie in possibly Ron Gardner's program or with, uh, the building trades that he's got going on there at SCCC? Give somewhere a young man in with it, an opportunity to possibly, you know, working on these, the sidewalks if we would and then gaining those hours of, of the rush.
We would look to do that. You know, you say it's required to get the apprenticeship program.
Right.
The bidding would have to meet the threshold. So if you only get one of these streets that actually submits a petition approved by the council, it would not breach the threshold for the apprenticeship program.
And what is it? Is it a dollar amount area or what is it? What makes the threshold?
Two hundred and fifty thousand. So.
Landlord, we make sure.
So if one of them put it in, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the current criteria that we award bids would not require an apprenticeship program.
And I would support, I really want to make sure whatever we're putting in for bids is going to hit that two fifty mark long way ago.
And it may be able to do that, but you just want to.
Flush it, yeah. But I think that's a piece, I think, that's very important to our community. And we talk about jobs and everything else. I think it's good opportunity for young people to get in the trades, um, making sure that two fifty or whatever it is, that's one.
Well, the way I'm understanding it, it seems to me we can anyway because we're not going to try to just do one street. What are they going to?
But it's, it's what the goals are. But again, the residents have to petition, has to be approved by the council. There's a process there. So again, two that have come in, the indication that they're going to do it again, it's probably going to do that. I mean, if one of these is changed or the soap of it is modified, then, you know, you have to go forward with different parameters of what you're looking at and talking about tonight. Chris, the other thing I should add to Mayor's point to your question about it is that there has to be at least going forward, there has to be a deadline. So, you know, I would think March fifteenth, April fifteenth. Because we have to assemble the bid, put it out. If you don't want to put these sidewalks in too close in winter. Because you want them to set up, you know, to turn green. You don't want them to be green and then they don't solve for the winter. So you just have to have that date revolving that. Hey, you got to get it in by this. And if you miss that, it's the next year.
There's a lot of questions here. So, so again, um, if, I'm just saying, a neighbor association or even a resident wants to go out to get these petitions, can he or she have access to the property owner's names? How do they get to find out who was actually the owner of these properties? Um, because again, we can't have, uh, I'm just thinking of a name here. You know, Johnny, Johnny Hosier signing as a renter, you know what I mean? And doesn't own the property and that, you know, out there. How do we, is there a list we can get or is that public information that they can receive?
It's a public information maintained by the county clerk.
So we request the word with these people go to get that printed off. So, you know, trying to make this easy as we can. Again, I don't need the answer today, but just, again, let's just say somebody's trying to go on Bradford Road. How does a Bradford Road resident get this list of who the property owners are for Bradford Road? So that when they're going down, they got this walking list, if you would, of who the people are that own the property. Um, Bradford Road is a sidewalk, so that's why I had to.
Well, you can ask the person at hand to do it too.
And they won't tell you the truth?
Uh, you're not hearing it there?
Well, I think that we would have to get it, you know, with the head so that people don't go to a house to guess. They already know, we tell them, they're going to go with number ten, number seven, number whatever. And the people that own property but don't live on the street, then you know where they live and that's when you get their signature. So I think there needs to be some list for the person, just become hit or miss.
Could you connect the county land records to a, to a website? You just go right to the way the street, you can pull up the ownership information for any parcel or property in the county.
County county land records. But would that give me the whole street card? Do I have to go every individual without no hatters? Every, I'm saying.
Well, somebody.
The county, yes. Skykey County image made online is the, is access to records. And you can sort that by name, by street, or by, uh, parcel, is it actually what it costs?
So there's information that I want to make sure we share with our folks who are looking to get these. Because you got to have.
And that's going to be confirmed eventually by the corporation council, of course, that's right.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Well, we got, you know, it's like, there's layers, but Mr. Hosier brings up a good point. Is there, um, some sort of provision within, or should we have some sort of provision within the legislation for people that have never had sidewalks on their street and do they qualify to get sidewalks in? What is that possible for? I mean, that's, that's, uh, it's a valid point, you know, to, right? So I think that's something that has to be included, uh, if, you know, or considered.
So, um, I just want to say here, we're trying to, we're trying to do a pilot program here, um, so.
So my thought is let's try to just keep going with what we have and maybe address that further down the road.
But if we have, if we don't have a provision for it and somebody that doesn't have sidewalks comes forward, well, how are we gonna refuse them?
The cost is gonna be a lot different. Correct me if I'm wrong, correct me how much would it cost for you to run sidewalks, for instance, down Bradford?
Random sidewalks?
Random sidewalks.
Would be actually very simple.
It would be the same cost?
It would be simple.
Actually, easier, wouldn't it? Because there's no cap rates.
Yeah, I mean...
Right.
Put an existing sidewalk, you're removing, do it right, do it some base, do it... Put new sidewalks in here.
Just sidewalks, no purpose.
Right, I wouldn't, if we're talking sidewalks.
Just sidewalks.
Is it sidewalks, please? Why? Is there an issue?
No, it's fine, it's just a, whether, is there an area of the city that we don't want sidewalks? And I don't know the answer to that question, but I think it's a question to ask. Right, and if so, then we need to make sure there's a provision for that because otherwise we can't really refuse it if it's not in there. And it may be that we want everyone to have sidewalks, and that's fine too.
We want us if you don't want sidewalks. No, I don't want to do that.
Well, so probably raise your taxes if you think about it too. Raise your taxes now they have sidewalks over not have sidewalks? I mean, I'm very surprised. It doesn't matter? Okay. That's why we're discussing this, you know, flush all this out.
I'm shocked. So do we have sidewalks in part of the city that we're gonna curve?
We have sidewalks for the curbs, I believe, so we have, we called it a class D street. We have all the streets categorized as sidewalks, so yeah.
What's that, the sidewalk?
Yeah. I mean, the biggest issue is the elevation, but the curve, the sidewalk, yeah. We got everything.
So you can have, I don't think you guys have... No.
I don't think you quite agree with anything, I'm sorry.
No. Alright, anything else? We're gonna, okay, we're gonna adjourn this until, for two weeks. So if there's any other questions, you know, we can, we can address via email. Wait, Mr. Bowman?
Sure.
Okay. So the rest of the items on the agenda for the city planning development are all in reference to properties being sold within the committee or within the city. So there are contracts that are gonna be discussed with financials and the claims. The claims, or one claim is gonna be discussed for Batunda.
Well, he's gonna call that, well, he's gonna call it a major.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I wanna recess.
Right.
A second, did you question?
Okay, yes. Alright, so city planning development is recessed.
And we can call for the claims, claim by Batunda, it's wild, absolutely.
You beat your toe, Sam, I was gonna... You beat your toe. Very good, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you.
Hi.
I wasn't gonna do that, you guys, you guys. I'm sorry. Oh, dear. This one's...
Do a bid, what? That's a good one.